Okay, everybody's ready? We're gonna begin our work. Our workshop, our study session on home rule and ballot initiatives. We are, we are waiting for Councilmember Romanello. He is, I don't see him in yet. And he's trying to get in via Teams. And Councilmember Kimple is going to be late. And I'm not sure about Councilmember Abbott. She has not informed me of, of anything, so. But we will begin, we have, we have four people and. Councilmember Romanello will be online. So the first item, since we're waiting on Councilmember Romanello, is to discuss. Well, with Mr. Cole's advice, we would like to start discussing a lodging tax. Whether or not it belongs in the charter. Or should it just be an ordinance? Based on CML workshops this last week. Started reviewing some things that came out of that and the city of Wheat Ridge has some excellent. Language in their ordinance related to not just lodging tax, but also. The application of it towards short-term rentals. Which is another topic that we can bring up another time, but as far as the lodging tax goes. What I would be interested in seeing is presented to the, to the voters. For 2024 would be. Somewhere in the two to two and a half percent range, which seems to be the, the common. Number that's across most of the region, if not most of the state. We would make it applicable to hotels, motels. Overnight truck stop parking. We have three current allowable uses for that. RV parks, should we ever get any in the town limits? And. The, the short-term rentals, so anything that applies to under 29-day stay. And so in other words, we would have to all agree to that and ask and provide direction to. Mr. Cole to draft an ordinance which would then put. The ballot language on the 2024 ballot. For the voters to decide to approve. If they did approve, then I would say we proceed with the drafting of short-term rental ordinances. As to how. We would like to legislate their, their being in the town. I, I don't want to go into the details now. I can provide. I provided Mr. Foreman the links to Wheat Ridge's. Ordinance itself, we could. We would host town halls to get public input, but as far as the lodging tax. The, the state average appears to be around 2%.
Can I ask a question more from an education standpoint, i.e. educate me? You mentioned truck stops. Is that typical? Because that, I, I don't know. Is that typical to where?
I don't know.
Okay.
But being that they're staying here for the night. And they're paying a fee to Pilot, Valero and Phillips.
Yes.
Then. We should collect the lodging tax. Now. Well, the other thing I talked to. Mr. Foreman about is that all of the taxes associated with lodging would be directed into a parks fund. So. It would not go to roads. It would not go to the general fund. It would all be earmarked towards parks and that would be in the ordinance.
Parks and trails?
Well, whatever. This is trails included in parks?
Yes. Okay, alright, good.
So. So this would help offset some of the, like, the, the things that we didn't get with. The Party for the Parks and, or, you know, that kind of thing, but it would be a, a good funding mechanism that's consistent. And it would help improve not just the current parks, but any future parks that we were gonna either develop or. Or maintain, we'd be able to use that money for that.
Does it also include the lake? Okay, alright, good.
Sorry, I'm speaker.
Yes, it does.
I like the bathrooms for the lake. Yeah, right? And, and fishing docks and fishing wharves and et cetera, et cetera. I like that. That, that's awesome. I like that.
Does, does the hotel pay sales tax on rooms? Is there a sales tax on rooms?
They pay sales tax, but not lodging tax.
So this sales tax is typical, so it's sales tax would be on short-term rentals as well, plus the lodging tax. Is that correct?
I'll have to check about the sales tax on short-term rentals. But we would charge a lodging tax on short-term rentals.
But the room rent, the room rates. Have a sales tax component as well. So it seems like it would be better to keep that all consistent if we were gonna do ordinances for short-term rentals.
Agree.
But yeah, so we, we wouldn't go through the process, I think, of. Creating the ordinance related to that until the tax passed.
Right.
And Councilmember Romanello, thanks for joining us. If you're. If you, I don't know how much you've heard, but from a lot, we, we were talking about lodging tax and putting it before the. The voters in 2024. And that money would be earmarked specifically towards a park fund so that our parks would be funded going forward by. You know, a portion coming out of the general fund, but whatever money was collected as part of the lodging tax.
dumb question, one more, sorry. The lodging tax, would this be, would this fall under the IGA that we have with Tribeview or no?
I don't know.
Okay.
But. We'll, we'll.
So I can. Maybe answer part of that. I believe it would, based on the IGA. We'll have to have Bob research that, but I believe it would, just like the police tax was. Available for them to collect half, but in the ordinance, the council chose to put to the voters, when you put the ordinance on there. To go to the voters on the ballot, you put on there that it would not go to. Tribeview.
Or it would be specifically directed towards parks regardless.
Well, remember also Tribeview has parks.
Yeah.
The difference, the difference in this and the difference in what we did for the police department is we provide the policing for Tribeview.
Yep. So I, I would. I would like. That if we're gonna do a lodging tax that goes lodging tax. That goes to parks, trails, lakes, whatnot. That it, it gets shared with. With Tribeview, since they are also taking care of several miles of trails as well as several parks. That have been put up. And, oh, by the way, a lot of the VRBOs are where?
They're everywhere.
They're everywhere, but the bulk of the residences are. In Tribeview. And so, I understand.
And we're, yeah, we'll get into that.
Okay.
At another time.
I represent Tribeview.
Anyway, so. Councilmember Romanello, do you have anything you want to add to this discussion on the lodging tax? Okay.
City just passed interquest.
Who?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was. Typing and listening doesn't work.
There's. I thought he was in Hawaii.
Yeah, Ken, Ken Kimple, just Councilman Kimple just passed interquest. Sorry, buddy. On his way.
He's not a participant, is he? Or is he a presenter?
He's in the presenter area.
Okay. Can you? Yeah.
Oh, you are, okay. So my thing is, I love the ideas about the funds going to the parks and trails and Monument Lake and all that. And I don't know, I was gonna say, if we have a surplus, like, let's say, we cap. The first year at 300K or something like that, and we make 350, can we use that? We just assume it's 300K, but we have 50K more. Can we give that to another department if they need it? Or for other, like, for building maintenance or something, like, does it all have to just go to parks, depending on? The return on investment, because I think it would be good, but I just didn't know if, if like the following year, okay, our parks are good. And I know trails obviously need updating all the time, but like if we had. An emergency fund, would it be locked in so badly, or can we move some of that parks fund to something else if we needed it? That's just my thought.
Mr. Cole.
Legal standpoint.
And, and from a financial standpoint, yes, you could. Identify two different funds for it to go into, multiple funds for it to go into.
So we could split it. Between general fund, which allows Mr. Foreman to. Move, move the money around to areas that are in need. I don't know that we, we will see that, that much, and, and since.
And I don't know either, but.
There's a suggestion to split it already.
I'd probably prefer to just keep it in parks, because I don't think we'll get enough to.
You really don't?
No.
Well, we, we don't know.
It's just, it's the, it's the 2%.
Just take what you know today. Just take what we know today and base it on that, if you have to split it with Tribeview. And, and we. Based on what, we have one hotel right now. We don't know how many. Short-term rentals we have. We won't have any RV parks. The overnight truck stop parking, we gotta review how we collect that, how we identify how many are there and stuff like that. I agree. I don't think the revenue the first year is gonna be a whole lot, so. But, on the other hand, if you did identify another fund to put it in that was in, not included in the IGA. Then you could keep all the money. And that's a town manager talking that represents.
Sure.
The town of Monument.
Okay, I, I was picturing like a billion dollars, but.
And I, and I don't want, I don't want to be, I don't want to be like another community that said, hey, we're gonna collect this much money. And they collect this much money.
Sure.
I would rather say, let's don't budget for that yet. Let's collect the money. Let's do a couple of years and see how much it comes in. So put it into one fund. We'll figure out how to use it, you know, going forward based on your approval. But let's don't, let's don't say we're gonna collect $800,000 the first year.
And keep, keep in mind, the voters have to approve this.
Yes, exactly.
It should go to something that benefits the residents.
Right, if we put it towards the general fund, I think we'll get a little pushback.
Yeah.
Uh, which is why I want. Right, we don't know yet. So one thing that we would have to do is figure out what the. Which I imagine is easy enough, since the truck stops are charging to stay. They should have statistics on how many nights they're charging per, per day. And with each charge, if we figure 2%, and, and they're only charging between eight and. I think it was $15, because they publish those rates on Pilot's website.
So they probably collect a PIF on that too, right?
There's a PIF too, so. QT is not allowed to have overnights.
Oh, good, okay.
But they do, and we'll have to figure that out later, but.
Okay.
But Valero, Pilot and Phillips. All are allowed to charge for overnights, which they are supposed to be doing. Pilot publishes their rates online.
Okay.
Um, I'm pretty sure I read it was under 20 a night. It really depends on what region you're in. And how long you stay.
Hmm.
So.
Interesting.
But I think Mitch, to your point, and, and Mike's. Um, I think if we're honest with, with our, our residents and say. Initially, we'd like to put it towards parks, but we don't know how much we're gonna get.
That's fair.
I mean.
Remember, this isn't the ballot language.
Right.
So we don't want a ballot language title.
Yeah, exactly.
300 sentences.
Yes, exactly.
Uh, because it gets very confusing.
Yeah.
Try to make it as simple as possible.
Sure.
But we also want to be honest.
Go ahead.
No, well, I, to your point, Mike, I, I think if, if we're honest with them and say, look, we have no idea how much we're gonna collect. We have a, a general idea of where we want it to go. Parks and, and, and trails and, and whatnot initially. Once we figure out, you know, what we're gonna get-ish. After, after a couple of years, then we can further refine.
It would have to go before the people.
Yeah, that, that's exactly what I was gonna say is. Is I would, I would dedicate it to a fund in the ballot language, because it's simpler. And then if we, five years from now, we look and go, oh my gosh, we got everything done in the parks that we need to do. We have all this excess funding that's coming in from this, because we built five more hotels or whatever. And there's so much VRBO going on, then you go back to the voters and say, hey, we asked for this much money. And we were able to do this many projects with that much money. Going forward, we'd like to use this money for X.
But parks, parks could also be, parks could also be buying park land.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. So we would never run out of money with that.
I know some north of town we might want to buy.
We could buy as much, we could buy as much in our hands on. If we, if we.
Resolved the issues yet with Councilmember Romanello?
Everything on this side is very burning.
Keep calling.
Was that the only thing?
Well, no, uh, well, Councilmember Romanello had a couple of things, uh, that, you know, he. Like he wants to continue the conversation about. The two things that he brought up and get a feel for. Those items that we spoke about last time. But I'm tempted to tell him to reboot.
Tell him just call. Put the phone up to the mic.
Well, there is a Team's phone number. Right? Okay, so we don't have phone numbers tied to Teams? Apparently not.
He, he received the meeting invite and the second meeting invite, and there is a phone number in there.
Alright, well, we'll wait for that. I, I would like to touch on the, the split of the, the tax. I believe the town's parks are. Um, more utilized and bigger in size. Than Tribeview. I would like to find a, a way to split it based on avail, on, on what the stock is.
When they have a, the parks commission that decides.
Well, that's fine too, if we want to create a park commission that goes out and takes an inventory of the trails and the maintenance costs and things of that. Um, it's not to say that those, those numbers wouldn't change. But if we did a 50/50 split. Right out the get-go. Limbach is used heavily, right? I would like to see it balanced so that where there's, and let's say Tribeview had more of a need. Then we would put the, the weight in favor of Tribeview.
Yeah, it should be a needs-based thing.
But if it's more on the non-Tribeview sides of things, then it would be weighted that way. And I think if it's, if it's balanced based on the need, and I, I am very much for a parks commission if we can.
A parks commission.
I like that very much.
There's, there's other towns that are our size that have commissions that we don't.
Yeah.
I know it's a little more work for town staff, because when those commissions meet. There needs to be a representative from the town that is participating.
The parks commission wouldn't.
Because, because one of the things I would love for the Tribeview side is the art sites, is to have art sites on the Tribeview side of Monument. Because there are some really. To me, some prime locations that we're not using. Case in point is the. The roundabout, um, that's at the top of Glen Eagle. It's a gorgeous view. There should be an art site location right there.
If we have art available.
Yep.
And so, there's a cost. I mean, we'd have to get into an IGA with Tribeview.
And that's a good segue.
A separate.
Yeah.
You're advocating for your.
For, for my district. So I, but I think toward, towards your, you, towards your point. Those pedestals are not cheap.
No.
They, because they have to be a, a very particular. A design.
Right.
To hold the, these things in place. I totally understand, but this is an example of a parks commission could, and, and I really, really like that idea. Um, I, I think that's, that's a fantastic way to move forward to where. The parks commission can say, hey. For this next, I don't know, this next. Trimester, semester, whatever, we're, we're gonna need to focus on X, you know, this next year. We want to focus on whatever, pergolas.
It's called having a plan.
Yes, exactly. So I, I'm very much in, in favor of, of having a parks commission. To look at. All of Monument, uh, to include art sites, you know, trails, connecting trails.
That's, that's one of Mr. Foreman's biggies.
Yep.
Yep. We, I mean, I've talked about this before, and we can go through it, but all the way from Mount Herman, all the way to.
Yep. To the upcoming. Fox Run.
Nature Center. Nature Center, yeah, that's where, and we're working with the county to do that now, and there's funding from the county, but.
Yep.
You know, for, to the mayor's point, the more we can focus that money on, on. One project or something like that is, it's, it's the better use of those dollars, I really do think. And so, I think it is the two.
Never run out of it. We'll never, we'll never need, I mean, we'll never need.
You'll never not need.
Need more money.
Yeah. There's.
Yeah.
Like you said, there's lots of opportunities to purchase land.
Yeah.
Uh, I think this community is begging for more land to be able to use for open space and parks.
At a later date, would love to talk about the makeup of, of this parks mission, or I don't know if it's part of today's, but. Maybe at, at another time, I'd love to.
Yeah, at, at the art sites meeting.
It was a. Authorization item. And discuss how that would be. Probably need to do a little research from other communities that have had them put in.
Yep.
You want to be the spearhead of that.
Okay.
By all means, and then.
Yeah, and Councilmember Fiorito's on our art sites committee, so it's a really good topic to bring up at the art sites committee, because I think that's something we could bring back to the council and make a report on.
Alright, Councilmember Kimble's here, let's start all.
And start after, good evening, go.
Really?
We're trying to get more parks.
Yeah, we're trying to do, get money for more parks, and you're saying no? Alright, everybody heard it.
A fine park.
Yep.
So we don't need to give any direction at this point, other than it's now in. Mr. Cole's aware of what we're trying to accomplish as far as, and. We, we do need to understand the timing, though.
That's what I was gonna ask, is I think you might want to give direction based on the timing, because the timing's really short.
So how much time before we have to have the ballot language approved, so it can be on the county? With the county.
So, so ballot language would have to be included about the first week of September. You would have to.
September? We have all the way until September?
I mean, you have to indicate to the county early in, early, mid-July that you're gonna participate in the election. And I think if you're going this direction. You should consider outreach before you finalize that ballot language to. Get your citizen input.
On a lodging tax?
If, yeah, you, yeah, yes, before it goes on the ballot, if you're gonna do that. If, if you. Think that it needs explanation, so the citizens understand what's being proposed and what.
So I, I, I think we've got a survey that backs up. The ask.
Yes.
From the perspective that the, the responses were very favorable to a sales tax in general related to going towards parks. And that this is step one, is the lodging tax first, that would be applied to parks. We could be informative. I don't know that we need more input, only because they've just provided us input. Are, are we, I mean, if no, if someone wants to do more. Uh, public input for that, we, I. I'm okay with it. I just think that we just did it.
One, one outreach that I would recommend is outreach to the Tribeview board and get them on board. That we're gonna do this lodging tax, that we're gonna have a parks commission. To. Distribute the, the funds to all of Monument and not just. One side. Or the other. And we, we get the Tribeview board on board. And. We. We get. We'll, we'll get a whole, a whole lot more buy-in. I can, I can do the outreach if, if the council wants to do that, but I, that's how I would approach it.
I think we need to.
Call Bob or Mike, feel about it. What's that?
I think we need to do some education though, too.
Yes.
You know, yes, we have the data, we have the survey. And to respond to the survey, and I think that's always a good, you know, lead-in. Because we asked you to respond, you responded, now we're responding to your response. But let people know. Before this all happens, just to say, we heard you, so here's what we're proposing. And then whatever next steps or whatever, but I think getting it out there from an educational perspective is, is crucial. My too.
So since you brought that survey up, I just want to make sure. We're doing apples to apples. Some of the questions asked in that survey talked about large projects that cost millions of dollars. Uh, and probably would take bonding capacity. And so when we were asking those questions, we were discussing sales tax. That can generate up to a million dollars a year that could pay for a bonding capacity to pay for projects in parks. I don't think the lodging tax is gonna bring in that kind of revenue. And so I don't know if you want to mix the two items.
Well, I think, I think what I was referring to is the general tenor of the responses. Yes, we want. To have more, better, prettier, larger, blah, blah, blah.
Exactly.
This is what we want, so it, it, taking the dollars away from it, taking the specific quote, large projects away from, but to say. This is the first step. We're taking baby steps, and this is the first step toward accomplishing some of those goals, because certainly there's.
Oh, yeah.
There's no way to do what everybody wanted. I mean, those numbers were.
Yeah, I like that idea of that. You start off small.
Yeah.
We do, we accomplish some really good projects, and then we go back to the voters and say, okay, we did this with this, now do you want to do more?
And this is paid by outside sources, so.
Right.
You know, it's not generating.
Right.
More sales tax burden on the.
All of the revenue, every single bit of it is someone who's visiting the town.
Sure.
So it's, it, unless. Never mind, I'll just leave it at that.
Can I, quick, oh, I had a quick question. Why? It, has there always been a fee for the trucks to stay overnight?
Yes.
Then why?
Not for the town of Monument. Well, the town doesn't charge a fee, the business charges.
Can we figure that out?
Well, statutory towns are not allowed to collect the lodging tax, so we weren't collecting anything. So when we went to home rule, this is why it's going on the first.
Got it.
Post-home rule.
Right.
Is now we're allowed to collect the tax.
That was one of the reasons that, out of many, but was one of the reasons that we went. Went for home rule was to be able to control. Our destiny, so to speak, and that was part of it.
Right. So we let the people decide if they. They decide not to, then.
We know.
We have our answer, but.
Are we on consensus for parks, for the money going to the parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello, are you able to speak up or? Maybe.
Will, Will and him are working on it.
Yeah, I know. I didn't know if he's listening or.
Still having issues. He's intending to repeal his mid-law back end again.
Okay.
But he, he is on. Is just his, Matt is refusing to let him unmute on his side.
Wondering if my Mac will do the same thing. I just don't want to. Stop the workshop, since he has something he wants to say. Um. Yeah. All right. Well, we're, we're not in the, we'll, we'll give him a few minutes to see, um, unless there's anybody else has anything else on the lodging tax. Okay, so we'll just hang out.
He's calling me right now.
Okay.
Jim, you're on speaker.
And even went through the email that we got about this meeting and I cannot unmute my mic. I am not a participant and will not do anything. I do not have my eye back in the town because we have three devices at Trap. So it's very frustrating. I have all this.
Yep, we can hear him.
Go ahead, Jim. We can hear you.
Okay. I agree with uh, the captain of the hotel, the pilot, any of that, any kind of lodging tax. Free, the charging of residence falls to home. It wasn't Airbnb or VRBO, any kind of tax. I don't need to be communist in California. I've done. I don't want to be overtaxed. Let the residents do. They own their property. When it comes to a business of a hotel or a pilot, yes. I don't want to be taxed. That's my consent. I agree with the fair, the kind of the fact and I listen. I was there and the, the meeting about a home rule gave us their dissertation on why they did what they did. Um, the constitution and the fact that senators have abuse of transportation or president have abuse of transportation. We, we are not negotiating treaties for the kind of monument. You're not ready for the President of the United States. Somebody can die for our country. As a course, one will lend them, plenty will lend them. If you don't trust our electorate, then we have a problem. So I think anybody who's eighteen years of age should be behind the council and give enough peace to citizens that have a monument that want to vote for them. God bless.
So that, that would require, is, is that? Is, is that where that, that requires a ballot initiative or a change to the home rule charter then?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, I have, I have one comment, Mr. Romanello. I have one comment about the, the lodging piece of the vest. Um. What I think I heard you say was that you're segregating types of businesses. So that if the business is not, is not a, uh, a, an owner property, but they're doing business, then they don't qualify for this, for the lodging tax. But if you're a business, doing business you do, how do you, what's the difference there? Okay, and I disagree. So that's just. I think if you're a business and if you're, if you're conducting business, if, yeah, I hear you. Okay.
So, um, the, this, I, I don't want to dig too far into the, to the lodging thing, uh, the short-term rental thing. Um, it, you know, people who would be paying the tax. Oh. Can you hear me now? Okay. So I don't want to get too far into the short-term rental. This came out of um, conversation with um, some folks from Wheat Ridge to see how they implemented some, uh, an ordinance around how they would be managed. And um, they are for people staying in the rental for under twenty-nine days. And it, it acts like any other lodging um, in the community. And so it's paid for by the people who are coming into the community for a short-term stay and then they leave. Rent, as in long-term rent, does, does not, does not count. That's correct. If they're there under twenty-nine days. Mr. Cole?
Uh, Councilmember Romanello, this is Bob Cole. Does it make a difference to you whether the, the VRBO is uh, owner occupied and, and also rented out? Or would, would you want your position on all residential units? Okay, I just wanted to understand that. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Kimball, did you want to add something?
So I understand what you're saying, Jim, about the uh, residential or the, the property owner. But there's also some things about the surrounding area, like the neighbors. Specifically, or in specific communities, some are, some are very densely populated. Others are very, you know, they have like two to five acre lots. That's a, that's a big difference. Um, that I think that we, that's something that has to be discussed as well is the impact of others in the community and res, in this residential uh, environment of Airbnbs.
I think we need to define what a business is. Because of, you know, if, if they're, I mean, there's plenty of, plenty of uh, companies that buy up single-family homes all over the place and just Airbnb them and speculate on the property value.
But. Okay, well, um, when we get the proposed ballot language, we can hammer it out. I, I don't, I understand what Councilmember Romanello is getting at. Um. I guess my, my thought process around it is slightly different. I mean, only because the property is acting like a business.
Well, it's not acting. It is.
It is a business and it's um, we're differentiating between a, a long-term rental, which does pay tax. It's just baked into the costs of the rent, right? So there's property tax that's being paid um, by the homeowner. But it's, it's collected via the rent every month. It's just not itemized out. And the lodging tax, um, I mean, I've already, I had, I've heard stories and I really didn't want to get into the, the whole short-term rental thing. Um, but I, I met with somebody today who has had Monument Police at the property next door to his house over uh, on the Jackson Creek side. Um, because um, that the short-term tenants are um, probably not operating in the most legal, legal manner. Um, it's even subleased. Um.
Yeah.
And, and so they've had Monument Police out there. They've actually knocked on his door at two o'clock in the morning to see if somebody was a runaway in his house. And um, you know, public input on this topic, we will get to when we start looking at how do we deal with short-term rentals, but if, if I, I, and I, I understand and appreciate what you're saying on this, Councilmember Romanello. My, my concern is they are operating their, their home as a business and they're not living there typically. And that's the, this.
Well, we don't pick and choose who's, who gets a better deal or not.
Right.
I mean, it's not fair to the, wouldn't be fair to the hotel. It wouldn't be fair to other businesses that are lodging. If we're going to pick and choose, either we do it or we don't do it.
Well, yeah, that's why I'm, yeah, it's, it's all or nothing, right? And.
Ul- ultimately, it, it, it comes down to if they're operating as a business, they should be charged as, you know, for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That too.
All right. Any other topics for, uh, we've got li- little more than fifteen minutes left, but before the meeting starts, I want to give everybody a few minutes break to, there's some food. So, but I do want to talk about real quick, if there's anything other, other items related to the charter that want to be modified.
So back to uh, Jim's uh, point about eighteen, uh, bringing the, 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 essentially the, the age down to, back to legal uh, eighteen. Is that, is that something that we want to put in as a, as a ballot measure then? And, and, and again, once again, let the voters decide if.
Yeah. I mean, I do, I do have a question is about that is what are the other municipalities? What are they doing? Do they have an age? Do they, do we know if they've lowered it down to eighteen? Have they not? Whether the, what's the state requirement if someone wants to run for a state office seat? What, what's the age in that?
There's, there's a lot of different ages and there's different. There, there was lots of discussion on this, obviously, as there is on everything, but um, and personally, I don't have a dog in the fight, to be honest with you. But um, Inglewood has a twenty-five minimum age. Um, there are other places that have different minimum ages. Um. Some people on the Home Rule Charter Commission wanted it to be a lot higher than it is. It ended up being a negotiated age and mainly I kind of looked at it as such that um, what is realistically, how many people under twenty want to run for council? Um, probably not. Hold on, hold on. Let me finish. Let me finish. That's, that's why I said it ended up being a negotiated, it ended up being a negotiated age. Um, because there were some people that wanted it much higher than, than what it is now. And and the, and the reasoning behind it was that various offices have minimum ages, so it wasn't out of, out of line. Um. Again, I, I don't really have a dog in the fight. I don't really care one way or the other. I'm just giving you the background on this. That's not, that's, I'm not, I'm not telling you. I'm not telling you that. Why would I tell you that? I just told you that I don't have a dog in the fight.
Nobody's saying that, Jim. Councilman Romanello, I don't believe that anybody has said that. That's never been the, the position, the posture. It, if you knew the hours that they spent talking about this and beating it to death, you, I think you'd have a better appreciation for it and it's a shame it wasn't recorded, but nobody's saying that at all.
One thing that, one thing I'd like to bring up, and staff always looks at this when we're changing ordinances, we're looking to make any changes like that. How many people were on the Home Rule Committee?
Nine.
And how many people were on the council that approved this? Seven?
No. Um, I believe we had one person saying no.
Okay, so we, fifteen people approved this that represent our community. And then have we, since it's been voted in, have we had anybody complain? Cause that's what we look at when we're trying to change an ordinance. Is anybody complaining about this? Has anybody looked at this? And are we going to spend the capital to make this change? Based on what? Is it, it should be based on the communities in an uproar about, I can't have somebody underneath the age run for office.
Well, I mean, I know I took exception to it right from the, from the get-go and um, kept my mouth quiet until we were told we can then engage. And so I did. I reached out. I spoke to it from the day I was, when we were, we had uh, the attorney sellers here. I, I understand the position they took. I still disagree that as an adult, that can be drafted into the armed forces and then subject to going into combat, that they cannot represent their, the citizens of the community. We are small. We are not, we are, this isn't a state level role. This isn't a county level role. This is certainly not a federal role. I see no reason why an eighteen-year-old who has reached the age of majority legally can sign contracts cannot also sit up here with the rest of us.
Wait, he can vote.
And they can vote.
She can vote, but she can't run for mayor. Like what?
Well, you can vote, but you can't run for Senator. You can vote, but you can't run for President. You can vote, but you, and there's a lot of exceptions. And all of this was discussed.
Alcohol. I mean, it's, there's lots of discrimination.
That is, um, signed into the Marine Corps. And uh, I would have loved him to run for office. Twenty-two years retired Master Sergeant. And I think if the voters of Monument want to put an eighteen-year-old in, let him, or at least put her on the ballot and let the voters decide.
All right. Well, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, but it needs to be a consensus of the, the council. Um.
I wouldn't do it. I wouldn't do it specifically for that, but if we were going to have a ballot measure for um, lodging tax and it wouldn't, you know, encumber the town in any additional money, I wouldn't be opposed to it.
Well, the lodging, so we, we're going to be on the ballot anyway, because we have four seats that will put us on the ballot. It doesn't cost extra to add items to get on the ballot, does it?
And tax issues will require.
Sorry about that. Uh, so uh, small increment in printing and then the tax issues will require additional costs related to the Tabor notice that'll have to be sent on those. To add an item like this would not involve that Tabor notice. So it's only a very small printing increment.
So we would have the four seats, a lodging tax and possibly an age change to who can run. And the least expensive of them is the age change, basically. But there is a, a incremental cost. Okay.
Very small.
Is anybody opposed to allowing the voters to relook at um, the age? If, I mean, there's no consensus, then there's, there's no consensus. But if there is, then we give direction to staff to draft that.
Well, I.
I, well aware.
Yeah, I, I'm, I think we had a commission of residents. We had a council. Everybody spent hours and hours and hours and hours of their own personal time coming to consensus about the charter. If we start tearing the charter apart, every item by every item, and it's starting to sound that way now. You know, we're going to do with this and then we're going to do that and then we're going to do something else. What was the purpose of the Charter Commission to begin with? I'm, I do, I'm, I'm, I'm opposed because I sat, I was the only person in the community who sat and listened to every single hour that they spent. And I sat on the other side, my mouth buttoned most of the time. Um.
That's true.
But these people went through this rigorously. They, they spent a lot of time, effort and energy. Yeah, and there was, there wasn't a, a single person who wasn't heard or didn't, was afraid to express themselves for fear of some kind of retribution or it was done very, in a very professional manner, in a very adult-like manner, and everybody had an opinion. They didn't always agree, but it was a democracy. And so when the vote happened, the vote happened.
Well, the one thing I noticed about the charter. the charter, and I think it did a phenomenal job. And then I was told I was educated at the end when it was briefed, because I had asked, when does it get reviewed for updates? And I said, you have to pretty much assign another group to do that, you know, and do we have to determine that or can we determine that now? Is it every is it every two or every three years, every five years? What what is it that they do a comprehensive review of the of the charter? And how it's written?
Mr. Cole?
So there's no set timeframe by constitution or the charter. Communities that I work with generally consider issues as as they come up and they're timely and and they consider whether amendments are needed. I I've worked with one community that did kind of that comprehensive review, first of all, their ordinances and then then they went and looked at whether their charter allowed those ordinance revisions that they decided they wanted, and then that that led to some charter changes. And and I guess I I have worked with another community that that I took them through Home Rule. And after I'm thinking the five to six, maybe seven year timeframe, they felt it was necessary to go back and look at the charter because they they just found that there were a number of charter provisions that after they had been implementing them for a while, they didn't think they were best. So so that that was another kind of comprehensive review. That was a little bit later than what you're looking at right now. That same community did make some ask the voters to approve some charter changes before that kind period, though, that they they felt were just necessary. So I guess I'm saying not a specified timeframe for when you would do a comprehensive review. Almost always on an ad hoc basis, when you find an issue that just needs, you feel the change. And then with some some level of comprehensive view review every so often.
But I but I think that that's really the beauty of our system, right, is it allows changes and updates and tweaks throughout the the process. And I think this is not an indication or a an indictment on on the Home Rule Charter Commission. This is, hey, you know, I know this was a the age requirement was was negotiated within the commission. Cool. Yes, we had the the vote. Cool. We we want to relook at it and and propose eighteen. The voters fail it? Cool. Then press. But I I think it's I I think that that's what one of the strengths of the system is that we pose we pose the question to the voters. And then if they come back and say, no, asked and answered and settled, move on. Cool. All right, let's move on. Or if they come back and say, hey, you know what? That's a good point. Let's let's change it to eighteen. All right, great. But I I think it's that this isn't an indictment on the Home Rule Charter Commission. This is simply we're relooking and tweaking things as we go. I I I see nothing wrong with that. That's the I think that's the the greatest strength of the of this system that we live under.
Okay, listen, we have five minutes. I I think at the very least, we've we can get to the point where we're discussing the want to see language about the lodging tax. And the only other question related to that is what number do we want to throw in there? Two two is the the average that I found across the state.
Is that the averages? That's the low end.
Well, I don't know. I I saw two. I saw two and a half. I've I've seen higher. But it seems that and and we can do a little bit more detail dive and Mr. Cole can report back what we we find to be regional.
Colorado Springs is two percent.
Yeah.
So we probably don't want to be too far off of them.
So twenty percent.
Right?
No. I'd like to give a a few minutes break before we start. So are we good?
Yes, and there is food.
Okay. I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
By the face of the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Erickson, we take role, please. Okay.
Councilman Furito.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Here.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Here.
Councilmember Romanella.
Here.
Mayor Lakind.
Here.
Councilmember Chronic.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
All right, before us, we have, let's see, disclosures of conflicts of interest. Mr. Cole, anybody? Bring up a conflict of interest this time?
No, sir.
Okay, so we can move on from that. Next up, approval of the consent agenda. We have an agenda and a consent agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion and eighteen seconds. Ms. Erickson.
Mayor Pro Tem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
Mayor Lakind.
Yes.
Councilmember Furio.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Does he does? Before we proceed, does Mr. Is Councilmember Romanella have Microsoft Teams on his phone? Yes, on your laptop. Do you have teams on your phone? Wouldn't hurt to try to see if it gives you the ability to unmute. Okay, thank you. First up, we have a presentation update on the Planning Department.
Oh, that would be me.
That is you, Mr. Foreman.
Yes, I'd like to introduce you all. I think I introduced earlier, but let's introduce them to the public. Ben Thurston with baseline engineering. Baseline has been, they just celebrated their twenty-fifth anniversary. All our employ all their employees are from Golden, Colorado, and Ben has two staff members, I think, that are online that he'd like to introduce. So let me introduce you to Ben Thurston with baseline engineer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I did all i introduced myself to all of you earlier. I'm the Planning Director for Baseline Engineering, and I have two two staff members online. Julie Estrel is a principal planner with us, and Lauren Richardson is an associate planner. All of the cases today was was Jeff's last day. All of his cases have been handed off to to these two planners, so we'll be working with you going forward.
Yep. So we have about twenty twenty projects that we need to complete. Still, we got a lot taken care of already. We also are interviewing in two weeks. We put out the advertisement for Planning Director, and so in two weeks, we'll be doing conducting interview views for Planning Director. We have already, I think we have four or five really qualified candidates that will be interviewing, and we'll be able to update you after that. But at this time, I do not recommend that we make any changes currently. We still have a lot of updates that we need to do in the planning department and a lot of projects that we need to continue.
Okay, is there any comments, questions for our new planning people?
Welcome aboard.
No? Okay. Any other things about that?
That's it. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
All right, next up, PPRBD is in the house, and they are here to give us a presentation and update. I certainly see all of your social media posts and pictures of our waterburger and the houses around it. And knee walls, right?
Good evening, Mayor Lakind and Council. My name is Greg D'Grando, and I'm the Public Information Officer for the Pike's Peak Regional Building Department. Thank you for having us in this evening. Along with me tonight is our building official, Roger Lovell, who has been before you a number of times just last spring to go over the code adoption. So we'll talk a little about that. Why we're here this evening, we wanted to go over our numbers here in the Pike's Peak region. And we've done this a number of years in the past. Really, it's just to try to give our jurisdictions an idea of what the growth is like here in the Pike's Peak region, as well as specifically here in the Monument area. So I will take you guys through a number of slides that will go over the highlights. Housing construction last year, it slowed for the second straight year. New multifamily projects dropped significantly, but the number of units reaching completion actually skyrocketed last year. New commercial projects went way up on the plan side of things. Re-roof permits spiked following the hailstorms that we saw last June and July. And we'll get into those numbers. And then we successfully navigated the code change on June thirtieth. If you guys remember, we came before you in the spring. You guys adopted that code and change, and that happened again on June thirtieth. Next slide, please.
Can you hang on one second?
You go.
Portion of this screen is being blocked by a Teams window. Can you please minimize that? That that box that is sitting on top of those numbers that are relevant, is that? Does that not minimize?
Yeah, it's it's hard to follow instead there. Let me try to.
You have another wind, another screen it can go on? All right, if it can't, let's just put it back in presentation mode. I just thought this is something we've discussed before. Yeah. Yeah, I thought that little that little hash would minimize it, but I guess not. Okay, sorry for the interruption.
So this next slide, you'll be seeing kind of look at our single family home numbers on the left, and then on the right, you'll have the new commercial numbers. On the left, I will point out the number for the month of June, five hundred and seventy-eight. It is a very, very large increase. That again is because of that code change that it went into effect on June thirtieth. We always see this every time we go through a code change. We see a very large increase in permits ahead of the code change along with our plans, and then the numbers go down in the following month. So you see a big increase in the month of June and then a big decrease in the month of July. So that was expected. On the commercial side of things, we came in at four hundred and two new commercial projects. That is down fairly significantly compared to twenty twenty-two. Just keep in mind that twenty twenty-one numbers, as well as the twenty twenty-two numbers, were very, very strong on the commercial side of things. Next slide. So this is a breakdown of our single family homes. For the year, we came in at two thousand seven hundred and eighty-five. That is down twenty-five percent, and that's the fewest number of new homes we've seen since two thousand fourteen. Then you will get into the breakdown of all of the eight jurisdictions that we serve. Colorado Springs leads the way with one thousand three hundred and forty-two, followed by El Paso County, Monument, Fountain, Woodland Park, Manitou, Palmer Lake and Green Mountain Falls. You will notice a couple of percentages off to the right next to Monument and Fountain. Monument and Fountain were the two jurisdictions that actually posted positive gains compared to the other jurisdictions. These numbers, I will point out, are going to be slightly off. Our system flags a number of homes in the area as Monument. I think technically it falls under unincorporated El Paso County. So I think the total number for Monument is actually going to be down slightly compared to this, and then El Paso County's numbers are going to be up slightly because of that. And we do have some maps, and I'll get into that a little bit later.
Such as Forest Lakes.
That is correct, sir. So we, Mr. King and I, if I'm correct, we were going back and forth on social media about this, and when you look at a map, Forest Lakes comes up and kind of blank the the word Forest Lakes blankets that entire area. So whenever I drew that map to do that, and I checked the homes, I checked a home in Willow Springs. Willow Springs is Monument. Forest Lakes technically is an incorporated El Paso County, so that's why there was some confusion there of what is Monument and what is unincorporated El Paso County. Next slide. So here's a look at the commercial numbers, four hundred and two. We were down twenty-eight percent. New multifamily projects, we came in at two thousand two hundred and forty-eight new apartments. That's down fifty-four percent compared to twenty twenty-two. However, for some context, twenty twenty-two was the largest number of apartments we've ever had in one year. We permitted nearly five thousand apartments in twenty twenty-two. So the percentage is very drastic, and it was quite a bit of a large decrease. Just keep in mind, the comparison is to a record breaking year in twenty twenty-two.
So what what's the median then typically is is twenty-two, three thousand typically? Your your normal?
It would be above the five year average, so I would say it's a strong, but probably right in the middle.
Okay, thank you.
By the end of the year, we came in at eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight apartment units with open permits, meaning we have eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight apartments under construction currently. And then one of the big things that jumped out to me on the apartment side of things was the number of units that were completed. And we had more than three hundred units that were finished up last year and came online and opened to renters. Other notable commercial projects, we had the Integris project. This was a one hundred and fifteen million dollar project in the Rock Rim and area of Colorado Springs. You had the Hunter Apartments. This was a another apartment complex in downtown Colorado Springs. You had the Sunset Amphitheater that's underway in the kind of near the North Gate area. And then the Colorado Springs Airport has a number of different renovation projects going right now, totaling up to over fourteen million. If you look at absolutely everything, we're including new homes, commercial projects, re-roofs, hot water heaters, furnaces, absolutely everything. Estimated valuation for all construction is three point five billion. So that is going to be down compared to twenty twenty-two, but that is still a very, very large number, and the construction industry continues to play an important role in our local economy. Next slide. So here's a look at our plan review numbers. New single family homes, we came in at two thousand eight hundred and fourteen. We were down sixteen percent. I will point out, though, that towards the end of twenty twenty-three, we did see probably three three months in a row and then four months in a row, if you consider January. The number of single family home plans were trending up, so we were in the positive for the last most recent four months. Residential alterations were down ten percent. New commercial and multifamily, we were up ten percent, and I broke that down further. New commercial, we were at four nineteen. That's a plus seven percent, and the most we've seen on the new commercial side of things, two thousand seven. And then multifamily, we were up twenty-four percent. So even though the number of permits were going down on the multifamily side of things, the number of plans coming in for future multifamily projects were actually going up. Alterations were flat, and then total plans, we came in at thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-five. That's down nine percent. On the inspection side of things, we came in at two hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-four inspections. That's down sixteen percent compared to a very, very busy twenty twenty-two. We end of the year with sixty-five inspectors. Our department averages about eleven hundred inspections a day. Daily average per inspector is eighteen or nineteen inspections. And then our miles driven for our very, very large fleet is just over one million miles. So El Paso County, as you guys probably know, is a very, very large county. So when it comes to getting to those inspections in the rural areas, we are putting some miles in. And again, we have sixty-five inspectors, so it's a lot of a lot of miles being put on the road. We are still offering same day inspections. We're one of the only building departments in the entire state of Colorado that offers same day inspections, something we're very, very proud of. That is everything except for roofing. That is the one area that we're not able to do same day inspections for a couple of reasons. Part of it is because of the weather. If it gets snowy and icy outside, we can't have our roofers up on roofs. It's just not safe. And then, of course, we have a backlog right now, so we have a bit of a backlog because of the number of re-roof permits that we had, and we will get to some maps to show you guys just how crazy it is. So here's a look at the. So here's a look at the maps. Um, this is kind of a visual look at where the permit activity is taking place. All of those green triangles are going to be single family home permits. The purple squares are going to be the apartments and there's a few red stars. I apologize, they're a little hard to see, but those red stars are going to be some of the new hotels that were permitted last year. Excellent. So here's a look at those re-roof permits and I, and this is kind of a big giant blue blob.
Mine's one of them.
We permitted seventeen thousand seven hundred and ninety-three re-roof permits last year and they largely came after that hailstorm came in June and July. That was a one hundred and seventy-nine percent increase, but again, that is compared to a year when we didn't have a hailstorm. So don't let the, uh, large increase scare you, um, but it is substantial. On the right, you'll have the hardest hit area, um, the Briargate, kind of the southwestern portion of Briargate. So you're looking at the map there. That's west of Powers and south of Research. That's an area that it's pretty much, you can see every dot door to door to door. That's where our roofing inspectors have pretty much been living these days. Next slide. So I'm going to get into some of the monument specific numbers now, uh, single family homes for Monument. Again, that's the two seventy-eight. That's plus twenty-eight percent. Um, but as I mentioned, those numbers are going to be, um, off a little bit. Um, Willow Springs kind of led the way with a hundred and fifty-eight. Forest Lakes then comes in with fifty-six, Sanctuary Point, Jackson Creek and Monument Junction. Single family estimated valuation for those homes is a hundred and twenty-five million. Residential alterations, we were plus twenty percent, but again, um, residential, uh, uh, re-roofs do fall under that residential alterations umbrella. Um, so that's partly why you guys didn't get hit nearly as, as bad as say the Briargate area, but obviously you did get some hail, as you guys know. And then the estimated valuation for those alterations, nine point two million. Excite. So here's a couple of look at the maps and this is the area, um, that Mr. King and I were, um, talking about online. Um, you have the Forest Lakes area off to the left-hand portion of the screen. You see fifty-five. And then you have the Willow Springs area with a total of one fifty-eight, um, in the upper right. Next slide. Sanctuary Point came in with forty-eight new homes. Next slide. On the left, you've got Monument Junction with twenty-two and on the right you have Jackson Creek with forty-five. Next slide. And then here's the breakdown by neighborhood. This isn't going to be all Monument. This is kind of Monument communities along with some of the larger, um, areas of El Paso County. Forest Lakes, again, I gave you the breakdown for, uh, Willow Springs and Forest Lakes. And then you have Falcon with two oh five, Banning Lewis, Wolf Ranch, Larson Ranch, Cordera, Springs Ranch, Skyview, which is a, uh, new community, um, in the southeast part of Colorado Springs down near the airport. And then Fountain coming in with fifty-five new homes. Excellent. Monument Commercial numbers, you had sixty-six. That was up fifty percent. So, uh, big increase on the commercial side of things. You had the Eagle Rock Distribution Center. That's a forty-four million dollar project going on the west side of I-25. Then there was a separate project that was permitted a little bit later, the Eagle Rock, um, Vehicle Shed. That was a one point six million dollar project. You've got the Mr. Car Wash and then you have, um, the Mayor's Whataburger that he's super excited about. Uh, that project came in at nine hundred and forty-eight thousand. Commercial estimated valuation fifty-nine million and then commercial alterations, one oh seven. We were up on the commercial alteration side of things by thirty-five percent. Excellent. On the apartment side of things, you guys do have some apartments going in, as you guys are probably well aware, um, Alta twenty-five, two hundred and sixty-four units. That's up four hundred and seventy-one percent. That's kind of, uh, unfair because I believe you went from, um, either a very small project or no apartment project the year before. Apartment estimated valuation thirty-six point six million for the apartment estimated valuation. Next slide. So here's just a map of the apartments where they're located. So on the left, you'll have all of the twenty twenty-three numbers. On the right, you'll have the same twenty twenty-three squares paired with the twenty twenty-two. So the twenty, the lighter purples are going to be twenty twenty-two numbers and the darker are going to be those twenty twenty-three. Excellent. So the data that I'm sharing, um, is not exactly available on our website, but we do have the GIS mapping tool. So all of the information that I'm sharing is available. It will just look slightly different, um, from what I'm going over with you tonight. Um, so this is the GIS mapping tool. Off to the left, you are able to filter, um, and look for certain things. If you only care about single family homes, you can set that or you can change the project type to new commercial. You can change the project type to multifamily, whatever you'd like. Um, you can also change the jurisdiction. So I have it, uh, defaulted here to Colorado Springs for this example. You could obviously change that to Monument and see the permit activity that's popping up here. Further down, you can't see it on this slide, but you can also filter by, um, square footage, you can filter by estimated valuation, you can filter by zip code. Um, a number of different things that you can do to help filter your search and then that will change the map. Those red clusters will change depending on what filters you put in. In the upper right, um, you will see a number of layers that you can put on there. Um, in this example, what you're looking at, I have the Colorado Springs City Council districts selected. So that's what you see, the different colors, um, over the top of Colorado Springs. We can go to the next slide. So here's a look at Monument. You can see those clusters on both sides of I-25. And then on the right, that's, uh, basically zoomed in a little bit more. When you zoom in, you'll get down to single dots, uh, single red dots. You can click on those and then it will then give you a, a lot of valuable information. It will give you the permit number. It will give you their address. It will give you the builder, um, the type of project. It will give you the square footage. It will give you the estimated valuation. Um, so it will give, um, anybody who might be interested in this, a lot of valuable information that you can get on there and click on. Yes, sir.
Do you have, um, the town council's districts input into your system?
So we have Colorado Springs City Council and the Color and, uh, B O C C.
So that, no.
No, they don't. This is, these are, these are active permits, right? These, these are not, these are not the one, after CO, these, this, these numbers go away.
So it depends on the date range that you've set. Um, so if you set it for the year, they won't necessarily go away. It's just looking for when they're permitted.
Well, will there be informa- I have a reason for asking. Will it, will it be, um, uh, will it say whether or not that they are CO'd and occupied?
It will, it will give you the status. So if you, you can actually see it on their permit status is open.
Oh, I see.
So if, if it was closed out, it would be permit status, um, complete. Yeah.
Good afternoon, Roger Lovell, Regional Building. Um, yeah, the permit status will show open there. If it shows closed, um, you have to scroll through that menu there a little bit in that screen, but you can go to the actual permit and pull up the permit history as well and, and look at, at that information there.
We're, we're redistricting right now and I'm just looking for another tool to give us an idea on what's coming up.
If there's anything that we can, we also have a lot of this information available. So if we can assist staff in finding additional information, we'd be more than happy to, to help pull that together.
Awesome.
So if it, if it is available on GIS, that's great. But if there's another way that we can provide that information, uh, we'd be more than willing to do what we can.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
But, but back to the mayor's, uh, question though, uh, once we re-district, would you be able to put Monument voting districts on your GIS?
If, if the town of Monument has the GIS shape files, then I think that's something that we could potentially incorporate. I'd need to check with our, our GIS team and our GIS contract.
Uh, we have one of those too.
We do.
But yes. Potentially. Thank you.
Thank you for wrapping up my, getting my answer.
We, we talked about it at our meeting. That's.
Uh, we'll go to the next slide and I think it will sort of address, um, to Mr. King's comment about the future. Um, so one thing that we've added to the GIS to, GIS tool in January of this year was the plan side of things. So it originally just started. Um, you could only look up the permit activity, but now we've added this plans tab. So this will give you an idea of what projects will eventually be coming. Um, so they're not permitted yet. They're just in the plan phase. So it's going to look a little bit different. You're not going to get the clusters because we don't have nearly as many plans coming in as we do permits. Um, so basically you're going to get everything spit onto this map and that's what you're seeing here. You're going to have some green dots and some yellow triangles. One is going to be plans that are approved but are yet to be permitted. And then once they're permitted, they will then disappear from this side and then they will move over and become a red dot over on the permit side of things. The other, um, symbol that you will see will be something that's pending. So a plan that's been submitted for a project, but it's going through the process, whether that be at, within our office or with the external agency, Monument Zoning, um, City Fire, City Health, whatever that project might be. So this is really a valuable tool, again, um, open and available to everybody. Uh, but this is something that anybody that's trying to kind of gauge what might be coming to a particular area in the future. Um, developers might use this, uh, realtors might use this, commercial brokers, um, as well as, um, city and county leaders. You guys might see some value in this as well. Next slide. This graphic you guys have probably seen before, but it has changed slightly. Um, this is a look at our fees. Um, normally we bring this to you, it's single family homes based on a valuation of three hundred thousand dollars. Um, there are not too many three hundred thousand dollar homes out there anymore these days, so we bumped this up to five hundred thousand dollars. Um, nothing really has changed on our side of things. We still come in at the lowest, um, fees in the entire state of Colorado on the single family side of things. On the commercial side of things, we come in second, only behind Pueblo. Excellent. And that's all I have for you. If you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to help and obviously Roger's here backing me up.
Any questions for PPRBD?
I got, I got a couple. So, so the apartments, are they categorized under commercial? Or is that just separate? So multifamily would be, would be for sale units and apartments would be commercial? Is that how it works?
Yeah.
Roger Lovell, um, I know it sounds, it sounds funny that apartments would be considered commercial, but yes, apartments are considered commercial. Uh, anything from, from our standpoint, it really comes down to how the building codes apply to these projects. Residential would be one and two family. So, single family at one and two, townhomes, uh, yes, and that's it. Once you hit three plus exclusive of townhomes, then that's considered apartments or condos, which we don't have any condos currently.
That was my next question in our quest to get things under five hundred thousand. There's no, there's no condo plans in for review right now?
Uh, there are, there are some condo plans in for review and I apologize because I, it would have been good to include an additional graphic. Those are some of the first condo plans that we have in for review in at least two or three years. Uh, in the past two or three years, we haven't had any condos and I have a, it's, let's see, from the Pike's Peak region, um, an interesting statistic from, um, okay, just trying to remember in my head, from between two thousand three and two thousand thirteen, uh, for every, for every condo that was constructed, there were four point four apartment units built.
Right.
From twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-three, for every condo unit that was built, there were a hundred and ninety apartment buildings, apartment units. Now, one of the primary reasons for that, uh, is construction defect, or litigation.
So the, so the condos that you have right now in for review, um, how many units are there about approximately?
Do you know, Greg? I don't know.
I mean, I, I just need like a ballpark. Is it like twenty, right? Okay. And those are probably higher end. Is that correct?
I, 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 I don't know.
Okay, but, but around twenty units.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, cool. I just.
Twenty more than we've had for.
No, and, and I understand and, and, and you know, we're just trying to, to, to gauge, you know, if there's, I mean, I know there's a big demand for that and I know there's a lot of hurdles in the way and the, and the state is trying to work through some of those right now. So I'm just trying to, uh, get a feel for what's going on.
There's, um, on our webpage, one of the great places to get that information is if you go to the permits tab from the main page and you can go to government reports, you can look back for, um, for more than twenty years at government reports each year. And it will show you the number of condos, the number of apartment units, number of single family.
All right.
So, and I'm happy to provide any additional information if you need it as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
On the, um, on the, on the, uh, roof inspections, is it just because of the sheer number is the backlog or is it partially because in certain areas? If you're using drones, you have to apply to get that approval to fly that drone.
Um, great question. We've considered the use of drones in the past, but you know, the, the easy way to do it from my standpoint is put the guy on the roof and let him look at the roof and it's just, the drone can't peel up the edge of the shingles. And look and see how many layers of, of underlaying that there are. Uh, the tricky part about re-roof permits is we always maintain a staff of roofing inspectors, but when we have a year like last year where we have just the average number of replacements, um, it's easy to staff for that. When we get hit with a, a big hailstorm, seventeen thousand is high, but we've had upwards of fifty thousand re-roof permits in a year. Then we have to bring on additional staff and, and the permits get issued quicker than we can conduct the inspections. Um, additionally, I, I take it really serious about not, not letting our guys get up on roofs if there's any chance of ice or snow. Uh, roofers, they may be willing to take a little more risks than we do, but I don't know.
Thanks.
Okay, any other?
I would just add one thing on that. So, um, one of the things we have done to help fight that backlog is, um, when some of the other inspectors have been down, we've actually shifted some of them over. Some of our building inspectors and some of our mechanical inspectors, they typically go out and do their regular day and then they shift over and do five or six roofs a day. And so it's at least trying to bring that backlog down best we can. So we're trying to utilize all the resources that we have available to kind of tackle this.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you. All right, that's it for our presentations. Um, we are moving on to resolutions. First resolution, oh, four, twenty twenty-four, resolution approving a final plat for Zeal at Jackson Creek final plat. Mr. Foreman, are you in receipt of a road study as it pertains to, uh, Higbee Road? Um, where Zeal property is, uh, up against?
I've not seen that yet. We expect to have it within the next week.
Okay, then I will, um, make a motion to continue this conversation, uh, to, um, March eighteenth. Giving you time to present the road report to the council at the March fourth meeting.
The March eighteenth meeting?
Well, the road, the road is going to be the fourth and then we can discuss.
Gotcha.
But anyway, in a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to continue this resolution. Ms. Erickson?
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Um, councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Mayor Lakind?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello? Councilmember Romanello?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That motion passes seven to zero. Next up, resolution oh eight, twenty twenty-four, resolution approving contract with Star Playgrounds for Limbach Park. Ms. Van Hooch.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, after our last meeting, I was very optimistic that we would be able to work with our consultant to get a proposal for tonight. Um, only to find out that she was at a, uh, sales meeting in Hawaii all week. And so we are, do not have all of the information or we did not have it last week in order to get it to you. So I would request that we have, um, we move this item to our March fourth meeting. We, we have been in conversation and we are close to having a final proposal, um, tomorrow for, for us. So we should be able to get all the information we need for the March fourth meeting.
Okay, um, I'll look for a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue resolution number zero eight, twenty twenty-four, a resolution approving a contract with Star Playgrounds for equipment at Limbach Park.
Yep. We have a motion in a second.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Mayor Lakind?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello?
All right, that motion to continue to March fourth passes seven to zero. Um, next up, resolution ten, twenty twenty-four, resolution appointing an alternate member to the planning commission, Mr. Thurston.
Yes, thanks, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor and, uh, and council members. Um, the full, the full complement of the planning commission is seven regular members and two alternates. Uh, current planning commission has seven regular members. Uh, the two alternate positions are open. Current planning commission has seven regular members. The two alternate positions are open. We have an application before you tonight for filling one of those alternate positions, and, and staff recommends that, that the council appoint, appoint this individual.
Is Sean Brown here? Is the applicant here? Okay, has anybody gone through his application? Any questions or concerns? Okay, well then.
I make a motion to accept Sean Brown as an alternate member to the planning commission.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello? Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next up, resolution 11, 2024, resolution regarding migrant response and declaring status as a non-sanctuary town. Mr. Cole?
We were asked at the last meeting to prepare this resolution. In general, it, it indicates that the county council finds that, that illegal transportation of migrants into the, the community here compromises safety, well-being, and resources available for your residents. It generally calls for, and supports legal migration and calls for the enforcement of immigration laws. It urges the town's residents to uphold the principles of legal immigration, and declares the town a non-sanctuary town. And that's in contrast to a sanctuary community, which is generally defined here as a community that limits cooperation with federal immigration authorities, and fails to provide information on immigration status. Happy to answer any questions about the ordinance, or the resolution, excuse me, that it really was put forward at council's requests.
I do have a question.
Sure.
I understand the non-sanctuary town, I'm all for it, but do we have a plan in place if, for say, a bus or van shows up somewhere in the town and just starts offloading? What is our, what is our, what is our plan? What is our strategy to keep it, keep everyone contained in an area until a resource is found to move them on?
Had lots of discussion with this, with our chief of police, and I'll let him address your question.
Good evening. First, hopefully I can just manage some expectations that this isn't purely a law enforcement issue. But of course, we're going to be there as part of the solution where something happened in the town. To address exactly what you said, how we're going to contain and kind of move people around, that's going to depend a lot on the people that are here. We're not chasing people around, we're not using force on people. But if we do come across a group of cooperative people that are looking for resources, we'll certainly be the, at the forefront to help with that. Reach out to our federal, federal partners. We have human services divisions in the state that we can reach out to as well. And that's our plan. There's nothing on paper yet, and we certainly can do that. But just through our discussions over the last couple of weeks, that's what I envision happening is that we're going to be the first point of contact. We have all the resources and the contacts throughout the state and country, you know, with our federal partners, that that's who we're going to reach out to first and say, this is what we have, we need help. Do, Chief, do you foresee a need at this time to have something in writing? Or is this something that you're going to continue developing, and then at some point have it in writing? I guess a better question is, do you foresee this more as a, a town plan or a county or state plan that we would have input in? The latter, to, to be blunt, but I would say that it wouldn't hurt to have an outline. I don't really want to get into specifics. I, I feel like it's going to evolve over time. But we talked about succession management, we're not always going to be the people in the chairs. That it wouldn't be a bad idea to, to brainstorm, talk with some of the local stakeholders here, and put something down on paper that if and when that does happen, we do kind of respond uniformly across the region.
Any other questions or comments about the resolution?
Well, I just want to say that I don't think that the town has the resources financially, or as far as locations to house people, we, we certainly don't have any buildings sitting around that we could house people in. And I think that we need to at least make it publicly known that we do not have these resources. And we'll just have to deal with it the best we can. But, you know, some communities encourage the migrants to come to their community, and they will take care of them, and they have resources that we, we just don't have. So I think we need to at least make it publicly known that we do not have those resources.
I, I think it's, we, we've all seen the news stories, what's going on up north of us, and this is why this has come to, come to be. You know, Denver just spent four times our annual budget, and is asking for an additional $180 million reshuffling of their money out of areas of services that they deliver to actual citizens, including their police department. I can, I can assure you that if we took money from our police department, we would be hearing about it on a regular basis. So that's why we're doing this. We are aligning ourselves with Colorado Springs and our county on what they've decided. I would expect we will see other municipalities in the Pikes Peak region also speak up as they've gone through, they're, they're going through these resolutions also.
And, and to put it into context, Mr. Mayor, what they're dealing with is just a drop in the bucket of what Texas is dealing with in terms of numbers. So just to, that's the, the severity of, of the issue is, is unreal. Anyway.
Okay, so anyway, that's the resolution. If there's no other questions or comments, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 11, 2024, a resolution regarding migrant response and declaring status as a non-sanctuary town.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, several seconds.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello? Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
That motion passes seven to zero. Last resolution for the evening is 12 dash 2024. A resolution to approve the construction project to build three new mansions on top of the well number 11, 12, and 13 for the public works department. Mr. Tharnish?
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Resolution in front of you is to approve the construction of the three wellhouses needed for the three new wells that were drilled late last year. The budget amount was, well, the process was through the RFP process, where we see three bids. Out of the three bids, the low bid was Bernard Structures, and the engineers have done the background research on them, and approval of projects that they've done in the past, and their backgrounds have all came back good. We were confident that they have the ability to construct this project. There was a little bit of an issue early on with their bond company, questioning the, the difference between their bid and the other two. That problem has since been resolved. They're fully bonded and insured. And we have set times to complete this project, and I'll take any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council on this resolution?
Yeah, I, I do. Just because I want to just get some things clear on the record, because after I had a heart attack and came back from the emergency room, when I saw how much these structures are going to cost, I had a lengthy conversation with Mr. Foreman, and he explained to me the, the reasoning that, that this is as expensive as it is, and that the low bid, which is substantially lower than the other two bids, although it's still expensive, that if we decided to rebid this, we would probably lose that bit. And it's the sign of the times that we're in right now, that everything is five times more expensive than it was five years ago. And I just wanted to put that on the record and, and thank Mr. Foreman for explaining that all to me.
Thank you, sir, and I appreciate you asking the question before the meeting so that we could get the, all that information together. It was really helped staff and helped myself get that together, so thank you.
Councilmember Romanello, you have raised your hand.
Yeah, I intended to say that to me.
That was only because Will asked me to, to try to get connected online.
Okay. Very good. Okay, excellent. The only comment that I, my concern about this, yes, is the, the cost. My concern is any delays that we've experienced along with the major water projects that causes our costs to go up exponentially, like the water tank did. I, I don't know that I can stomach cost overruns like we experienced with the water tank. This is being funded by part 2A and part bond, right?
Yes, we believe that at the current level, it's probably going to be all of the bond proceeds. We have about $2.1 million in bond proceeds, but if it does expand past 1.9, then we're probably going to hit some 2A funds, but we're trying to keep all of our 2A funds as much as possible to be able to build the next water tank.
Now, I'm just airing grievances on how much the water tank went over budget, and the potential for this to do the same. I mean, it's an awful lot of money for three buildings. And that, that, those funds in 2A potentially could be used in the future for our other major water projects that we have been discussing. And if we had cost overruns, it would take from that pool. No pun intended about that.
Well, that sounds to me like a contract negotiation issue at this point.
Okay, then I will go along with what you just said. Mr. Cole, are we, from a cost perspective in the contract, are we, is there anything indicating how much more this could go over? Or are we locked into this fee and that overages are going to be paid for by the contractor? How, how, how are we?
I'm going to have to look back at the contract. I don't recall that, but we could certainly, we can certainly require provisions that lock in those amounts, make them as rigid as possible.
I, I would, Mr. Cole, I would suggest that going into the future, after what we've been through, that we do have very strict contract negotiations on anything in the future. What's done is done. What's the past is the past, we can't fix it. But for the future, I think we should lock or hold bars on limits for costs.
Yeah, because the, the, the way the resolution reads, the 2.1 is million is inclusive of 200,000 for contingency purposes.
Right.
What's the likelihood that we're not going to go through 200,000 in contingencies, and you come back to ask for more money? That means another resolution. I, I just, I know we need the buildings, but I, we don't need these buildings to cost $5 million. And what's the timeframe that they're going to be built?
I, I believe the time requirement was changed when we were doing the bidding out, and now it's at 180 days to ensure that they're complete. Originally, we tried to get well number 11 completed within 120 days, so we could get it online for the summer. But once the problem came up with the contractor and the bonding company, given a little bit of time to work that out, and we decided to extend it out since the, being available at the beginning of summer was, was not really going to be a viable option anymore. So we have plans in place to make sure we meet demand throughout the summer, and then hopefully these wells, if they're done on time, should come online. We'll, we'll go notice to proceed in about 10 days roughly, pre-construction meeting. So you're looking at March 6th, so probably if we're, if we're really good and push these guys, we could have one of these wells online by mid-August, most likely first part of September. So six months would be their time limit, after which time they would incur liquidated losses at that point.
I, I have a, a comment. This is, I guess, more for Mr. Cole. Is it traditional or customary to write contracts the way that the government writes contracts for their defense contractors? And what I mean is penalties for not, if, if there's a date, and the date is September 1st, and for each day after that, they're penalized money for not completing by that date. Do we ever write those kinds of things?
That's what Tom was talking about. It's liquidated damages.
Okay, so that, we're doing that?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
And there, there's been previous projects a couple of years ago, when we were remodeling a water treatment plant, where the contractor exceeded the, the date by 30 days, and it cost him $30,000. We did, we did cut that out of their final check.
All right, so the, one, one more quick thing. So there's, there's a fair amount of contingency in this. Should there be any reason to use, I mean, really, it seems like there shouldn't be any reason to use any of it, but there, there shouldn't be much. I mean, these, these, these buildings should be pretty easy to, to estimate out. Oh, sure.
And welcome, Department of Public Safety Associates. And usually 10% is, is plenty for a contingency, and that would have to, you know, be used to cover unforeseen conditions. And so if something were to come up that were, wasn't anticipated during design, then that would be something that could be paid for with contingency. Usually your jobs are about, are less than 5%, but 10% should be plenty for that.
You, you, but in this case, other than trenching electrical lines, there's really nothing unforeseen, correct?
Right, I mean, it could be foundation conditions or something to that effect that, that would be unforeseen. So there, there could be a, a few different areas of unforeseens, things that are not anticipated at this point.
So expansive soil for foundations, you're saying?
Right.
You know, I don't think we have much of that around here, so that shouldn't be much of an issue, but.
Right. I don't expect there would be any reason to exceed the 10% by any means.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I was kind of hoping that we'd get into it at all, and that's, you know, I'm just looking for what could possibly come up, because otherwise, everything above ground should be pretty well fixed in the, in the price. Yes, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions or comments, I will look for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve resolution number 12 dash 2024, resolution to approve the construction project to build three new wellhouses to support the operation of wells number 11, 12, and 13 for the public works department.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello? Councilmember Romanello?
Come back to him.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
And Councilmember Romanello?
Is that the only account that? Is that the only account that he was just speaking two minutes ago? Mr. Romanello, whatever you did before, can you please redo it so we can hear you? All right. That motion passes six to zero. Next up, traffic impact study for Highway 105, Jackson Creek Parkway. We have Mark Kitsmiller of Jacobs Engineering here.
Yeah, he's online.
Okay. Is there a presentation that he's going to be sharing?
I believe there is.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great. I'll just introduce our traffic engineer. Again, I'm Mark Kitsmiller from Jacobs. So this evening, we're gonna provide the results of a study that we were requested to perform in response to some questions that were raised at the December 4th council meeting. They were pertaining to the Monument. I'm sorry, the Maverick Traffic Impact Studies and the Monument Junction Development as a whole. With me virtually tonight is our traffic engineer, Michael Hugh, who has a short presentation of our study findings.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, hang on one second. Yeah, Mr. Cole?
Before they begin their presentation, if I could, the traffic study that you're about to hear does relate a little bit to this Maverick application. The applicant is not before you. This is not part of the public hearing. So I need you to, as you consider this information that's being presented tonight, know that if that application goes forward, all this information would need to be re-presented. You shouldn't form any conclusions from tonight's presentation. And, and anything that gets presented in the future will be subject to notice, hearing, public comment, developer, and anybody else to respond to.
Okay, thanks you for that.
So can we ask questions about this or?
I think you can. Yeah, you just have to remember that, that this is not presented as a part of that application and so it shouldn't factor in at all if that application comes back before you.
So questions would be mostly to clarify?
Very general.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Then we're just waiting, I guess, for the presentation to come up on our screen.
Sure.
And
should be seeing it, I think.
All right. Yeah, as Mark said, my name's Mike Hugh. I'm traffic engineer with Jacobs. So, yeah, just as Mark said, had some questions on the Maverick traffic impact statement. Councilmember Kimpel was nice enough to kind of provide us some of his concerns written out in email, so I could kind of go one by one and look exactly, look into exactly what what the issues were with this. And so here presented is just kind of the, the email to us of some of the concerns and stuff. So I don't I don't know that I need to go through kind of one by one. I can maybe just summarize this top half year that we're looking at, I think, kind of summarizes the, the concern was traffic counts being collected when school was in session, that maybe it was Christmas break or winter break or fall break or even the summertime. And this was just that kind of different, different intersections that were in that that were in that report. This part down here was kind of the same thing, was just some dates that looked like that they were outside of school times and things like that. And then, so let me touch on that part first and then I'll, and then these kind of last two bullets I can come back to as I scroll through here a little bit. So we dug in, I dug into that, kind of looked at what was provided to the council in their packet for that December 4th meeting in terms of what, what the TIS was. This is just kind of our response back to Mike Foreman, just kind of what we, what we found. So again, I won't go through it point by point. I'd rather just kind of talk through it to maybe read from it. But everything that I'm going over is, is kind of covered in here. And so in, in terms of talking about traffic count collection dates, there were some appendices in the report that was provided in the packet. And from what I could tell that some of these dates that were, looked like that there were outside of school timeframes or, you know, within the winter break, a couple of weeks or something. Those are kind of, a lot of these, as you see in this top half, Synchro is a traffic modeling software and it kind of gives you all your outputs or stuff when you put in these volumes here that are shown in yellow. And the dates that are attached to these type of sheets, they really don't mean too much in terms of anything really. They're usually kind of auto-generated by the program on when you may run or print the analysis out. So within that same report, this was in an appendix D or E or something like that. I think it was D. And in appendix A, they had the the traffic count output or collection that, that was done. So in this particular screen here, and I'll just zoom out a little bit. It might be hard to, to see it all at once, but just showing that, you know, we're looking at the southbound I-25 southbound ramp at Second and State Highway 105 and we're kind of, and we're looking at the same same intersection down here. So here they have, you know, that these were collected on, on December 8th, you know, where the same intersection up here says December 20th. And again, these are just kind of auto-generated by the program. And that was really, I think, let me scroll back up. Sorry for all the jumping around here a little bit, but I think that was kind of the concern on most of these paragraphs was just a lot of them weren't those dates on the Synchro output, you know, did not, were not when school was in session. So we didn't we did not clip out an example of every one of those as I was showing down here, but pretty much all of that is kind of the same. It would be the same answer. So I'll, I'll pause right there. Let you guys ask any questions. I can do my best to try to answer if there's anything.
Okay. Councilmember Kimpel, would you like to?
Yeah, so I have a few questions. On reading, reading through your email and I appreciate the response. And then going back and looking at the correct me if I'm wrong. I know at one point they said, you guys said that you weren't gonna take the KH study. You were gonna use the LSC study?
Correct.
Um, because the KH study in June of 2023 was site-specific for Maverick. And it was also done in December of 2022. Anyway, the traffic collection date in the LSC in the March 17, 2022, you guys did a traffic study in June 15, 16, 22, and 24 of 2021. There was no school.
Yep.
You, you also did a study in October 21 and October 28, and then again, November 9th and November 18th of 2021. Those were on a Thursday and a Tuesday. So school was in session, but the traffic study was only done on four days. Vice the recommended three days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, peak time, morning and night.
Yeah. So you're, you're correct on that. And I, I probably should have mentioned that about the Kimley Horn study, which is the KH study. So that was the one that was provided in your packets on December 4th. For whatever reason, I, I don't know, but the applicant moved from Kimley Horn to LSC. So the LSC report was what we finally approved. So you know, the, the, the things that I was just talking about a little bit were, you know, ultimately kind of didn't those specific things didn't matter because we, we moved away from that report. And so just kind of providing some general information on what to look at and, you know, have things pop up or whatever and reports from in the future here, just kind of to know what to look for. In terms of the LSC report that we did look at, there was, and you can see on my screen here, whoops. There was a Monument Junction Master TIS done that was dated March 17, 2022. And they collected volumes in, in June, October, and November of 2021. And so again, I, I'll just state for you guys, I, you know, I don't, I didn't write these reports. LSC, you know, they, how they kind of cooked it all up is, is those specific things, you know, they can answer that. But from, from my perspective, and they, and they did weigh in a little bit, I should say, on, on kind of what they did with the counts. So they, even though they collected in June, they collected the same intersections or at least a couple of the same intersections in October. And so they adjusted those June volumes to kind of an October level, if you will, for school and other things that might have been going on in that day. You know, on that, on that typical day of October Day. As far as when the counts are collected, you really only need to collect one day of, of information, you know, but typically it's best to collect on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. You don't have to collect all three. And so that, that's what they did. And that, that was some feedback LSC provided to us was that they you know, they kind of used a growth factor, if you will, or something when they looked at the October. I'll just, for an example, you know, maybe they counted June, counted Jackson Creek and 105 in June, and then they counted it again in October. And so they could use that comparison to kind of grow or adjust volumes at all intersections. And again, that's just an example. I'm not saying that's what happened everywhere because I don't know that for sure. But that's the kind of things that, you know, would, would typically go on with these types of things. And you know, another thing with LSC is that they do so many different, so many reports for the town of Monument. So they have a really good idea of kind of how to put all these volumes together. And, you know, adding things in from other developments and adjusting. And and so that's why you'll see some, again, I'm, I'm speculating a little bit, but I think that's why you see some volumes be from June and then not collected again till a few months because they have them. They do numerous reports, so they may pull traffic counts from different reports that they have done, you know, to, to suit a new one or something like that, if that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but it did say in the LSC report that because of the, the numbers in the numbers in the 2021 may have been skewed because of the COVID lockdown. So what they did is they added 1% to those numbers?
I, whoops, what am I doing here? I did not, I do not recall seeing that. But I can, I can look into that to see if that was.
Just, it just because it said the, I think it was said that the June numbers were lower than the later on in the year and that may have been because of COVID-19. So they added 1%.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if that's kind of like a norm or standard practice because there was no traffic count on Jackson Creek Parkway itself. It was all at the intersections. Joining 105 or Jackson Creek or I believe also Higbee and
Yeah.
uh, Jackson Creek. So there's nothing, there's nothing actually done on Jackson Creek itself. And if I'm looking at your table two of your reports, you know, you're looking at grand totals that are, well, first off, let me step back. I thought in the appendix B of the El Paso County traffic guide, section 3.18 says that the traffic shall, traffic study or traffic number shall be obtained non-holiday Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I know it doesn't say that in our roadway design and technical criteria, but then we, we default back to the El Paso County one is my understanding. And I could be wrong in this. So then I was wondering, I, I've been asking this question is and it says in your guys' report that the it says in your LSC report that you're considering or you, you're stating that Jackson Creek Parkway is a major collector.
Okay.
And major collector has a 10,000 trip threshold capacity. When I look at your table two of your reports and it gives grand total numbers, you're either at that threshold or over it on the weekday trips. And there, of course, they're estimated, one is total trip and then one is estimated. So you're already over the threshold capacity and we haven't even really, we haven't even really got into the volume of traffic on Jackson Creek Parkway and how we're dividing Jackson Creek Parkway. Are we only doing a traffic study on from 105 to Higbee or are we doing all of Jackson Creek Parkway? Because part of Jackson Creek Parkway has been expanded to a four lane and it doesn't matter if it's a four lane or a two lane, it's still a 10,000 trip capacity before things have to be modified, corrected, or fixed for the to go beyond that volume of traffic.
Okay, and you're seeing that in the Master TIS, the 31722? Do, do you recall?
Well, I, when I'm looking at, I'm looking at table two.
A Councilmember Kimpel?
Yep.
We don't all have this information in the packet. So can we figure out what we're trying to accomplish with this discussion?
Number one, I'm trying to identify exactly what Jackson Creek Parkway is classified as. Number two, if we don't have the accurate data from, because they're, because they said that I'm, we're supposed to use the LSC report for all of the development on Jackson Creek Parkway. And I'm assuming from Higbee to 105. But we didn't do any, we didn't count volume of traffic on that specific road. We did it at the intersections. And I don't believe we did it Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, as it's supposed to be required as per the El Paso County guide. So we're voting on, we're voting on some, we're voting on development that, okay, first off, we already know that Jackson Creek Parkway is a mess. Number one. Number two is we're voting on development to go in there that's going to further impact Jackson Creek Parkway and the community. And that's going to cause an additional hazard if there is some kind of emergency that we have to get folks out because there's only there's only two ways to go on Jackson Creek, north or south, to get to I-25. And that's all the addition, including all the additional traffic that's coming out of the Woodmore area. That's coming off, that's coming westbound on 105, that's going to be coming down Higbee Road and that's going to be coming down the other side streets. That's what I'm trying to get at is.
Well, I mean, so all the development for the most part in Monument Junction has been approved. The roads are supposed to be expanded to match that of Jackson Creek, south of Higbee, if I'm not mistaken. So four lanes, right, to each direction?
Which won't change the threshold capacity.
Well, this, this all stemmed from a conversation related to one business and the intersection being developed to handle what that business was going to provide. Are, are you, are you looking to have Jackson Creek expanded further because you think the volumes are going to exceed the capacity? Because I I, I'm, I'm getting confused about this. We, the developer I, I'm, I'm getting confused about this. We, the developers said what they were going to provide. The town has to provide X amount of money. To develop it. And I thought the, the main point of what has stemmed from this was. That the intersection at Highway one oh five in Jackson Creek was not prepared at the current time for us to. Put a business that was going to. Totally increase the capa, the, the amount of traffic at that intersection. But this, this seems to be a lot more expansive. And I just don't know, am I wrong? Am I missing something? This seems to be more expansive of a.
Well, I'm not, I'm not getting into the specific business because as. Mr. Cole alluded to that we're not supposed to be, we shouldn't be discussing that specifically, so.
Right, I'm just, I'm not concerned about any, what business it is, any business that would make it so that one oh five in Jackson Creek became completely congested and caused problems. Because Jackson Creek has not been completed yet to its, its final. It's final state. I, I just trying to figure out what we're seeing here. And what the end goal is. With this report.
So Councilman Kemble had asked all these questions and we were instructed to have Jacob's engineering take a look at. LSC engineering and Kimley Horn's engineering numbers and, and make a presentation back to the entire council. Answering Mr. Kemble's questions. Currently, we have Jacob's engineering, FHU engineering. Working on widening, working on designing the widening of Jackson Creek Parkway from Higbee Road all the way to. Uh, one oh five. And so. In two weeks, we're coming back to you and tell you an update on that project. And so we're going to have FHU here. They're going to be talking about the update on that. Jeremiah, our assistant public works director will be there. And they're going to update you on everything that we need to tell you about the expansion of Jackson Creek Parkway.
But this, this report. With the data that you've gotten, because I haven't seen any of the data. You're on some charts or something that must have been sent to you via email from them.
Cause he, he did them himself. That's the research that Mr. Kemble did.
Okay, so I don't, I don't have a copy of it, so I don't know what he's looking at, but. So.
They have on their, on, on the LSC reports. They have their information with their numbers. And they discuss each, each one of the roadways. And they talk about. How they reduce the trip numbers. For certain types of homes in this area. That. Normally would be a higher number of trips per home. And that's another question that I just, that I had is, as per why, why was the numbers reduced?
But, but is the reason for this to determine whether or not the, the design work, which has not been completed. Is going to be sufficient to support. The amount of traffic generated based on the development that's being built out?
Both the reasons of the, the, the design work. And the completion dates of the design work. That will be completed afterwards, like one oh five is not projected to become a four lane highway until twenty forty. A four lane road, Highway one oh five. That's, that, because that's El Paso County.
Mr. Foreman, is that true?
I, I don't know where he's getting his information from, so I can't say.
Estimated to be complete, one oh five, estimated to be completed in twenty forty.
Okay, I don't have that.
That we all have.
Okay, I don't have that in front of me.
But you're talking about from eighty-three all the way up to Sidalia, Sidalia, what?
All the way. Every one oh five, Highway one.
So county Highway one oh five. Well, they're actively building four lanes outside my master bedroom right this minute. I hear it all day.
How much does this cost that we just did? This study, this quote study, did it cost us money?
Yes, it did. No, for Jacobs to review the study, yes, it did.
How much?
And to answer, I, I don't have that in front, I don't have that in front.
I, I would love to be able to make a motion anytime that I want as, as, as one council member without the approval of the whole board. Let's just go spend thirty grand on a study. Why not? Be fun. I mean, I, 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 I'm not okay with this at all.
Well, it's, it's done now and I just want to figure out at this point. Well, has this, the information you've received back answered your questions?
Let's keep doing it.
Jim, when this was discussed, it was because of the, the. Numbers were not accurate and there was understanding or potentially that when they did the traffic count. It was, it wasn't on days that probably should have been to reflect the appropriate or more accurate numbers.
Well, I will tell you this, I know, I, I know from common sense that I don't go to the library or my dry cleaners at three o'clock. Because that is the worst traffic conditions. By Palmer Ridge ever and no one drives in Monument at three o'clock or eight in the morning. And so what? That's the way it is. Um, I don't need a study to tell me that, okay? And listen, I will tell you this, no matter what NIMBY attitude we have. Or I'm already here and nobody else can come, I will say this. Colorado Springs is going to grow north. Traffic's going to come south and we will either be a, a, a choke point. Or a tax loss. Or we will do this smart, but things are going to grow and things are going to happen. And I think we need to do this smart and not just shut everything down. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, well, I don't get that. That's what the intent here. I think that's the whole point is to make sure that we don't have a choke point, to make sure the roads. Can contain the volumes of traffic that are coming, but.
And in all fairness, the road can't control the traffic that's coming right now, so some, something needs to give.
So, so we can proceed on. Is there more things that you need answers for? Or. Because it's going to come up again, when it comes up again, and we'll be able to discuss it at more length, so. Do you have enough information now that you can generate more questions and answers or are you feel satisfied with the answers that you've received or?
I'm sure when the other stuff comes up, I'll have some other questions, but yeah.
Okay, so can we move on from this? You have enough?
Mayor, we do have a person in the audience that would like to speak.
Okay, I'd like to make it. There's, you've been standing out in the sun too long doing road traffic studies.
Jeff Hodgson, LSC Transportation Consultants. I wrote the report and I stamped and signed it. So I can hopefully answer. Some of these questions.
Does anybody have any questions for our guest?
No, sir.
I guess there's no questions.
Okay.
But I appreciate you making the effort.
What's up? On the, um, on the traffic study that was done in twenty twenty-two, is there a reason why? You all decided to reduce the number of the, of trips on the homes? You said you use special land use data. To reduce the rate of vehicle trips to, down to five point three five trips per dwelling on the weekday.
Yeah, we looked at the specific product type. The square footage and the density and, and we looked. And that was, we just, we talked it over with. Uh, our client and. We made the judgment that. That based on the product type and the, the size of the units and the configuration, it was, it was. We thought it was more appropriate to use. A different rate than just a single family detached uh product. And that was a decision that we. That was a judgment call that we made and we conferred with our client and, and it was reviewed. By Jacobs and the town and everything, so. What we.
Who, who's your client?
Uh, classic.
Okay, thanks.
And so that's, that's why we did that. It looked like it was more. It looks like it was more reasonable to assume. That particular rate that we used rather than seeing it just as straight single family detached, ten, ten trips per home per day, so.
And then also on your report, some of, some had stated that although. Like on the. Believe it said on the. Jackson Creek and one oh five, the let this, the. Southbound turn or one of the turns was. It was, that was going to be over the threshold as well, but there was. There wasn't a direct fix. To help reduce that backlog of traffic.
Not sure what. What you're referring to.
There isn't, there's a, in one of your, in, in the report, it stated that there was a, although. The trip generation generated during the buildout, it was still going to cause a traffic delay turning onto one oh five. And I believe it was the left, left turn off of Jackson Creek onto one oh five. And that was combination of, because of where the lights are located at. Probably not being synced, but. There wasn't like a fix for that, so that in my, in my mind, I saw further backlog on Jackson Creek Parkway. Because of that, but there's no, there's no remedy. And then also it said that there was no. Immediate need for further lights on Jackson Creek Parkway during this. During this buildout. But it didn't, that it didn't. It didn't cause for the immediate. Instal, install of, of lighting, of the lights.
Well, what we did, we looked at the different phases. We looked at. Initial phase, which is basically the residential on the east side, Jackson Creek. We looked at lots one and four. The Whataburger and the Maverick as phase one and we kind of evaluated. We actually evaluated just the Whataburger before Maverick and then after the Maverick came along and we, we looked at what. Improvements would be needed at each of those steps. And we ran through the level of service analysis and. You know, we went, we did several iterations of. Uh, working with staff and everything and. Basically, we came to it. The levels of service for each of the phases met the town's standards, so is what.
At some point, wasn't there a F level of service?
Yeah, and that's why we recommended that we said probably when you, when the Maverick goes in, it warrants a signal. At, at that access point, Fat Tire, I think it is, and Jackson Creek. So that is in our report that. Probably needs a signal. Uh, at that, when slots one and four are developed, it, it would need a warrant for signal, but. Of course, it's up to the town if they want to signalize the intersection or not, so.
Okay.
You know, of, go, going forward, are we. Ignoring the, the KH traffic studies and just using the LSCs?
My understanding was they called us because we had the history, we had the, we had all the analysis for the whole project. And what we were trying to do is tie in those first lots. With the overall and, and also tie it back to the original master study that we did. So we had all that information, so. That's why they called us to, so we could tie it all together, compare it to our last. To our master study, so that we're, we're kind of making apples to apples comparisons, you know? Um, because we had the benefit of all that information, Kim Lee Horn didn't, so they did the best they could, but. They brought us in to kind of tie it back to the master, so, yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, public comments are next. Individuals attempting in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Uh, these are for items not on the agenda. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. They'll be limited to three minutes. Is there anybody here? In Town Hall that would like to comment? That wasn't eating some delicious dish? Kima? It was not Kima, was it? Anything? Okay, anybody online? Okay, then we'll move on to council authorization items. Does anybody have any council authorization items? All right, any comments from the council?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
First, um, I'd like to shout out to the chief. And Detective Dodd, who did an absolutely extraordinary job. At, uh, at the senior center presenting scam alerts to a bunch of blue hairs. He was so patient. He did such a beautiful job and I was there, so I. Listen to the whole thing and I know these people and. It's hard for them to understand a lot of this stuff. He was absolutely stellar. Excellent job. Thank you very much.
And that's coming from somebody with purple hair.
And then I have two, two things that I was told I should bring up for council consideration. One is. In your, the, the Colorado Municipalities Magazine that we got today, page forty-one. There's a CML bookstore and there is one, well, there actually, now that I look at it, there are two books that I think should be part of. I'll call it required council reading. One is Bob's Rules. And the other is the Home Rule Handbook. And so what, um, Mr. Foreman was suggesting was that he wanted, would like direction from council. To make sure that we all have copies of this stuff. That's number one. Second thing is, they also need direction on our photos.
I thought that was settled, but okay, but what, what direction do you need?
Some of us.
Best side, you're good.
Some of us didn't like them.
Oh, okay.
Would like to see them done over with a different photographer.
Oh, okay.
Are you just talking, are you talking the group photo or the individual or?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes. So then, um.
So if council would give me direction, we can look to hire a different photographer if that's your wish. And Portia will work with the group to get a group photo and to each one of you to get individual headshots if you're not. Happy with your individual headshots.
Go for a whole new head if I could.
That's not part of the deal.
Yeah, is everybody good with that?
Sure.
Okay, so there, everybody's good with it. Um, I don't know about Ms. Romanello, but.
Hire a new photographer, it's all fine with me. Nothing will make you more pretty, Mitch.
Pop that new head, Jim.
But I love you.
What about the books?
Um, oh, I already got a book. I purchased mine. Um, I believe they're all electronic. That means that you can get them with your CML account. You can get a PDF. It's important that we go through these, uh, because. We are going to look to incorporate or not incorporate, codify. Bob's Rules as our standard rules to work. Right now, we're all shooting from the hip. And not, not doing a bad job from what I'm told, but I'd like to codify Bob's Rules. Um, at some point soon.
Speaking of the books, did we ever circle back on the, uh, the one about the town? The grave site? Did we ever ask questions about that?
Are you talking about the cemetery?
Yes.
Why don't you just mention that? We've got a meeting coming up, but it is moving ahead and it is spectacular. They're, they're doing a great job. It's getting, unfortunately, it's getting bigger. Longer, you know, um, but lots of photos, lots of information. It's, I think it's something everybody will be proud of.
Just didn't want to see it for doubt.
Nope, oh no, none of, they won't let us forget it. It won't die.
Cemetery book won't die. I got that.
Mr. Kemble?
Yeah, so I would, I would like us to talk. And give direction. To the town about putting on the agenda, having a discussion. So we can make it a final decision once and for all about the, our, our town war. Either go with the loop system or the NDS. We, we've been provided plenty of briefs. We've seen how much, or we've been provided. Cost. I think we need to have, the, the council needs to have a discussion so we can determine which direction we're going because it needs to be. Decided on. Because we need to add that and budget for it as we're already coming up to March and we need to start talking about budgeting matters for future years.
I don't disagree. Don't disagree. I'm, I'm done waiting too, so.
I agree with Mister Kimble.
There you go.
You just heard that. What day do we, do we want to have a discussion as a council in open session where we discuss pros, cons?
Want to do it in a workshop?
Okay.
Less formal that way.
Sure.
We don't have to make a decision there. Um, we can at that point give direction for an ordinance to be written as to which one we, we want.
Okay.
So um, March fifth is, fourth is filling up.
I would, I would like to see, I would like to see real data. I I don't want to be making decisions on wags and that's where we're at right now.
With one.
What, what's kind of real data?
Cost data, for one thing, the study isn't done and uh we don't even know how feasible it is right to do the.
Yeah, the, the loop is still liquid jello. The NDS, they're operating, they're, they're doing a test of the, of the pump house in March.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that the, and and I don't want to get too much into the weeds, but the NDS does nothing for Village Center and.
But so this is, this is why we need to sit down, have a discussion as a council and discuss the pros and cons of each option, the money and what, how we want to move forward.
And I agree.
It's not on the agenda and let's set a date, something.
Yes.
Yes.
March fourth agenda um is getting to full. Uh, eighteenth workshop, are we good with that?
That would be great.
Okay, there you go. It's been established. Eighteenth workshop on water for us to have an open. We have to get it knocked out in an hour. We'll set up a boxing ring someplace in the middle of the, with the chairs.
And we'll still come to no conclusions.
Right. Okay, um, so next up is.
Five thirty.
Yeah, five thirty. Any other comments from the council, from the council?
I guess Jim Dobby comes to raise your hand.
Jim Dobby is not a member of the council, so I.
Actually, I do have one comment. I'll make it brief.
Mayor, I just, Bob just reminded me, we do have the um, LDAC meetings with the council.
The what?
Updates, the redistricting. Yes. Yeah, we set it, we set aside in our uh schedule to be able to have both those March meetings be joint sessions if necessary with, with the commission.
Which takes priority over a wag, okay?
April Fools. So we want to do a Saturday work session?
No.
No, none. That would spring come up, April fifteenth.
April, what's wrong with April first?
April Fool's Day.
What is?
You might tell me the wrong thing.
Is that a holiday?
That's a tax deadline. I'm an investment advisor, not April fifteenth.
So April, yeah, April first, you're good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, April first.
Okay.
And we can play all the practical jokes you want on that day. Yes, water workshop. All right, um, what was the other thing, Mister Foreman?
Sorry. What was that?
Are we good? Are we, we done all council comments?
You wanted, you wanted one more, you wanted one more. Oh, I'm sorry, did somebody else have?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
What, just one quick comment that, that the mayor and I and and Mister Foreman all attended the C A, CML legislative session. And um, although there's, you know, five hundred really bad bills up there right now. Um, there is one that they're working on that has to do with the remedying this construction defect. Um, lawsuits that come about on, on for sale condominium units. And um, I'm very happy about that because we do have a substantial number of, of zoned multifamily properties here, and I would much rather see um, people be able to buy the true affordable housing rather than having to rent an apartment. So um, I am just happy that that is moving forward at the state level and hopefully that will get remedied sometime soon.
Okay, um, I would like to take a ten minute recess.
Hold on, I had to, to remind you of.
Okay, one thing is um, beginning the second meeting of each month will be board reports. So you may not have anything to report. Um, I certainly don't expect us to um, take up a lot of time. They should be with um, issues that matter to the town. Um, and so like arts or eventually park, you'll be a park commissioner, park ranger, whatever it is. Um, CML, we can, we can. Uh, so those will be due and they're gonna be put on the agenda somewhere towards the beginning. Is that where?
It will be before ordinances and resolutions.
Okay, before ordinance or resolutions will be board reports beginning the second meeting of March.
We already have, we already have them on our drafts.
Which should be plenty of time for all of our meetings to have taken place and, no, what days? Right, that's fine, that's fine, yeah. And then the other thing was food. Um. We didn't budget for food. I don't expect the town to pay for us to eat. Um, for meetings where we have workshops, um, I don't have an issue with it. But again, it wasn't budgeted, uh, so we need to give direction to the town to um, to not procure food for us unless there's a workshop. Um, I, I can't help it if we can't all eat in time. I, I, I don't care if you bring food with you and eat it at the dais because you're hungry, but I don't expect the taxpayers to foot the bill.
I don't need it for workshops. I don't ever get anything from there anyway, so it's.
I, I would, I honestly thought it was budgeted. So if it's not budgeted, I'm good doing without it. I, that was my.
It came up after the.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, after we'd already set budget, it came up.
Yeah. We can, we can forego, I'm, I'm good with that.
I'm sorry. Well, like I said, if there's, if there's, on workshops when we're going long, we should have enough time between the workshop and the normal meeting to go grab something. But if not, um, I will buy everybody a cooler and you can, it'll say Monument on it and you can bring your food and eat it right here. Uh, Chief's got a smoker out in the back. You can smoke some food. Anyway, I just uh.
I'd say just get rid of it.
Okay, there, there we go, uh, to get rid of it now. Did I, did I hit both of them?
Mike, you did.
We, we don't have a lot of time left with uh Councilmember Romanello, so um, I do want to take a quick break though. Um.
I'm gonna let the planner go.
Sorry, what?
I'm gonna let our planning consultant go, if that's okay.
We just got him. You just hired the guy.
So he could go home and stop charging us.
He's already, he's already quit.
Okay, all right.
Before we go on break, we have to move to go into executive session, correct? Because we, we screwed it up last time. Yeah. Okay, I, let's, let's, okay, I make a motion to. Glasses, sorry, hang on. Read each one, right?
Into our screen.
Like four separate motions.
Yes, yep, okay. I make a motion to go into executive, executive session pursuant to CRS twenty four dash six dash four oh two sub four sub A and CRS twenty four dash six dash four oh two sub four sub E concerning the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer or sale of real property and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation, developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators.
Second.
Your motion is second. To go into executive session.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimble?
Yes.
Mary La Kind?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
All right, that motion, Pat, do we need to do the other three right now?
Yes. Yes, and then we could just roll from one to the, the other.
I make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to CRS twenty four dash six dash four oh two sub four sub B for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding pending legal projects.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Mary La Kind?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimble?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're up.
I make a motion to enter executive session pursuant to CRS dash, excuse me, pursuant to CRS twenty four dash six dash four oh two sub four sub B for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding special districts within the town of Monument.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second, Ms. Erickson.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimble?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes, with the caveat that Councilman Fiorito has to read every motion from here on out.
He's doing well. Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Mary La Kind?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Last one.
Last one.
I make a motion to enter executive session pursuant to CRS twenty four dash six dash four oh two sub four sub B for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding regulation of long term property rentals.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Erickson.
Are we gonna come back into session?
We haven't gotten there yet.
He has, doesn't he have to say that now?
Take the vote.
Should decide whether.
Vote first and then.
During the meeting or.
This is how we screwed it up last time.
Let's.
Hey, continue a throw call. Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimble?
Yes.
Mary La Kind?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
All right, that motion passed seven to zero. We will not be adjourning from executive session. We will be coming back should any actions have to be taken or direction given. And then we will adjourn, so we will be coming back. In the meantime, we will take a ten minute, ten minute recess, come back at eight thirty. Okay, we, as um, we have ended our executive sessions and we have um, one set of direction to give to um, Mister Foreman and staff. And that is um, that he is authorized to investigate, negotiate and make offer pending council's decision on a piece of land in the town of Monument. Have, everybody concur with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, if there's no other business, Mister Foreman, Mister Cole, any other business?
I have nothing.
Then we are adjourned.